We're going to have a prayer before we stop. Thank you.
Our Father in heaven, we bow our heads before thee as councilors to the town of Cardston and the administration. We ask that thy spirit will be with us, that we'll be led and directed in the affairs of this community. That what we do and what we say and what we decide will be for the benefit of the community and the surrounding areas. We ask that you look favorably upon our community and the surrounding areas. And keep us safe, Father, we ask this. Take us now into our meeting and we ask these things humbly in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Thank you, councillor. All right, today is the twenty-seventh day of October. It's hard to believe we're just four days away from Halloween. And we have a regular Cardston Town Council meeting. We recognize that we have the media there for Temple City Star and for Channel thirty-two. Thank you so much for your presence. And we also have a delegation of the skating club in our gallery. So we're going to call the meeting to order. And any additions to the agenda? Sign on. Helen, need a motion to adopt, councillor Benbury?
Motion to adopt the agenda.
Thank you, all in favor? Thank you very much. All right, so we have our delegation. Thank you for being here so promptly. Mrs. Angela Walberger, would you like to come and give us a little bit of your concerns? We have your letter and we know a little bit of the issue. We'd like to know what it is that you would like to request from council.
Okay. So my name is Angela Walberger and that is, could you just stand up and wave your hand?
Thank you.
This is Rebecca Vadney. She is our vice president and then Nikki Malmberg is our secretary treasurer. So we're here this evening to request the town's assistance with our significant drop in registrations equalling revenues this season due to COVID-related causes. The two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one season, we were limited to twenty skaters on the Ice by Skate Alberta guidelines due to COVID restrictions. So even going into the season, knowing our registrations would be limited, we fully expected to meet the twenty skater maximum. Given our registration generally sits around twenty-five upwards to thirty can skaters per season and generally eight to ten star skaters. This year so far, we have six can skaters, two parent todd skaters. So that means the parent needs to be on the ice with them because coaches must maintain physical distancing. And ten full-time star skaters and four part-time star skaters. We have had a couple of new skaters move here from British Columbia to join our club as well as movement up from can skate and returning skaters who took year off last year to pursue other opportunities. In the last ten years that I've been involved with the skating club board, registration has never been an issue. We have always been able to make ends meet through fundraising. The significant drop we are experiencing this year could reasonably be attributed to COVID-nineteen factors such as fears, uncertainty, financial difficulties of community members. This is something beyond our ability to deal with. We have amped up our advertising as well as promoting Jump Start and Kids Sport, which are outside funding sources that are available based on income. Our situation is not unique. I can tell you the Lethbridge Skating Club has experienced the same thing. For example, on a Saturday morning session where in any other year they would have fifty can skaters on the ice at one time, they have five. So I've also talked to the Skate Alberta representative and it's the same across the whole province. Every club, every business, every family has been affected by the pandemic in some way or another. So we understand this is not unique to us. We felt that as a board, it was important to continue offering Learn to Skate and Figure Skating programs for our community. First, if we were to stop for a year, we'd lose participants to other activities. So we wanted to keep up whatever momentum we could. Secondly, our coaches are NCCP-vetted and travel from Lethbridge and Colehurst to coach at our club. If we took a break for a year, they'd find another club and other opportunities and that would make future coach procurement very difficult. Finally, for those participating in our program, it provides physical activity, skills growth, socialization, and an outlet where we can help children feel a bit more normal in current circumstances. We have already planned additional fundraisers for the current season. Generally, we do fundraisers anyways, but those are to help with covering general operating costs on an annual basis. Coaching, which consists of wages and travel and ice rental are our two largest fixed costs. Those do not change based on the number of registrants we can acquire. But in a normal year, we have enough registrations to cover coaching and then we use our casino fundraiser that happens every three years to cover our ice costs of about $10,000 a year. We feel this club is an important part of our community and has been for more than fifty years. As part of the National Skate Canada Organization, we're able to deliver high-quality proven programs of instruction with highly trained coaches. We have fourteen star skaters in our club this year. All have passed can skate requirements and are developing their figure skating skills. If we don't continue to provide can skate, we put the longevity of the club in jeopardy given that's how we gain star skaters and develop program assistance. Program assistance are vital to our can skate program. They are on the ice with coaches and kids helping deliver the program. We are asking the town to help us with a drop in revenues as a result of COVID-nineteen. Our expectation was that we would bring in thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars in revenues. To date, we've brought in eight thousand, five hundred dollars, resulting in a $5,000 decrease in revenues. Whatever amount the town would be able to help us cover in our $5,000 shortfall would be greatly appreciated. For the club, it means continuing operations for the current year without adversely affecting our future operation.
Thank you very much. It's so unfortunate that so many sports program are affected by the present conditions with COVID. And we totally appreciate the need for children to have an outlet, we really do. So we will discuss this, but if there are questions for Mrs. Walberger, please go ahead, council. If not, we will deliberate later regarding this and we will do our best to help you.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks. No, I ask, oh, I ask if there were questions, okay?
What did you say with the number, how many have you actually got enrolled this year? As per usual?
We have, okay, so we have eight when we usually have twenty-five can skaters. Overall, we expected, given our twenty, our twenty maximum, so I am not talking about like twenty-five that we usually have. Given our twenty maximum, we expected thirty-four skaters in total this year. We have twenty-two.
Thank you.
Yes.
So what is your most popular program?
Can skate.
Can skate?
Can skate's generally our most popular program. Probably about four or five years ago, we had to limit our registrations in that program because, not because we were capped by any Skate Canada guidelines, but because we were capped by coaches and the amount of kids that we could handle on the ice and what we felt you're paying for, you should get some attention instead of just being a mass of kids out there. But can skate really is our most popular program. It is used by some people to graduate, or not to graduate, but to use for hockey. So can skate is not a figure skating program. Can I, like, that is not a figure skating program. Can skate is a program that teaches hockey, ringette, and figure skating skills. So it is like your base to move on to other things. So you have kids who come to do can skate for a year or two and then they go on to hockey because they have like this good base of skills that they can use. I'd say in the last couple of years, that's sort of changed.
Okay, councillor Brown, councillor Silk?
If in fact we could find money for this as far as another stream that we could find through the government or whatever, would it be possible that you could offer, you're saying you're capped at twenty, but it doesn't sound like in any of these, you haven't even hit that cap, right? Because you've got six and two and four and ten, right?
It's really, it's really the can skaters, like where we, where we had twenty capped, that honestly, I just expected to turn people away after twenty, right? Because usually we have around twenty-five.
But if we could get more funding for you, could you offer, could you offer it to more people? If people knew that there was funding in place, do you think you would have more people come forward?
I don't really know. Like, we've just had eight in the can skate program register. So I don't know if that's going to, like, have people, like, if there was an incentive.
Yeah, we can't offer, we can't offer programs at any other times than we already do, right? Because ice time is decided a while ago.
Thank you.
That's limited.
Councillor Silk?
You need to explain the can skate formula a little better because back in my kid's day, it was, they took power skating to help them with hockey.
Power skating is a program offered by Skate Canada. So you have coaches who are specifically trained and have their certification in power skating and they take power skating. In the past, the skating club has offered power skating to the hockey club. Like, they've used our coaches in the past who've been trained to offer that program. So power skating is really for hockey. It's really to just develop speed in that program. Do we, we do not offer it right now. Our, our one coach who has moved on last year to a different club, she's the one who had the power skating. So we don't have a coach currently that has her power skating certificate or his power skating certificate.
Yeah, if I could just add to that for your question is can skate focuses around agility, control, and balance and the different levels of different skills required in those three streams to give the kids more confidence and ability on the ice for various other sports.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. If there are no other questions?
I want to make a comment.
Please go ahead.
I used to coach hockey here in Cardston thirty-five, forty years ago. And I had a goalie that was a lousy skater. And, and, but he was a good goalie, but he needed to upgrade his skills. So I sent him to power skating school here in Cardston. And that kid went on to be the head hockey personnel for minor hockey Vancouver. And then he went on to Japan and worked for many years in Japan. And that's Andy Strang's boy.
Oh, yeah.
And he did that because of the Cardston Skate Club. And that was a great program, power skating. And I think that that's something that you might want to encourage these kids to move on and do that. It's really helpful.
Yes, it is a different avenue that we've looked at before to generate revenues in conjunction with hockey mainly. Just right now, it isn't an option, but thank you for sharing that story. Skate Canada is a national organization. That's, okay, so when you watch the Olympics on TV, that's where skaters are trained. That's where they come from. They're all part of this national organization. These programs are tested, they're tried, they're true. They, there is value in being a Skate Canada club. There is some cost associated with it, but in comparison to the framework and the Safe Sport tools and the national database registry that we can be a part of, that is worth the cost that it is because the program is very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will deliberate later on and Jeff will contact you. Thank you very much. And thanks for all the good work. We have our second delegation, Mr. Barton Atwood, our sewer and water plant update. So Bart, if you'd like to come to the podium and help us understand the problem with that facility.
What I'll start with?
I'm sorry?
What I will start with?
Go ahead.
In your package, I have, we'll go to the water plant as it is priority one. Yep, no, the water plant is the filter media.
Oh, yeah.
And, and what I, what I'm presenting to you here is a pilot study done in Saskatoon about two or three years ago. And they did a very thorough study of this filter media. It hasn't been in Canada too long. It's been in Europe for quite a while. And it's, the, I just want to show you some facts about the study.
Bart, help us understand, this is the coagulation?
Yeah, the filter media is what cleans the water. It's the highest priority on our water treatment before the
The water is really
UV treatment and the chlorine.
All right, thanks.
Yes. And in our, I'll, maybe I'll first address the problem. The problem we're seeing is that our filter media is plugging up quite often. And then we have to do a lot of backwashing. The backwashing costs us money in pumping and, and we lose water. Because we're, we're just filtering water and processing water and we use that same water to wash the filters and that just goes out to waste. So it's a cycling that, that it's hard not to get around because we have to use it in that way. So in the summer times, we're finding that our filters are really binding off, meaning they're getting so plugged up that we can hardly get water through them to get them drained out so we can backwash them. So we have to do a few tricks of the trade to try to get the water out and through them so we can backwash. Which takes more water and wastes more water. Because what we normally do is we filter the water through the, through the media and treat it. But now because the filter media binds off, we just have to waste that top water off and then backwash.
Now, Bart, if I remember, in a study on a water plant that was done when we were, as the county wanted to add on, they had mentioned about that weakness at our water plant.
Yes.
I remember reading that, so thank you for explaining that.
Yeah, we have to change the media approximately every five to ten years. We have to take all the media out and replace it because it gets broken up into a powdering form and it's no longer good for us. So we have to skim off the top quite a bit in a maintenance issue. And then eventually we lose the, the depth of the media. And eventually we just have to get it all out and replace it. It's getting to that point now where we are
Councillor Silk?
So the bottom line with the plant, Bart, is $175,000 to replace the medium?
That's the bottom line.
Okay. Will it make, will it taste better?
Takes the organic taste away?
I have another little trick to take care of that and that's going into place probably in January.
Okay.
Years ago, we used to treat the water with potassium permanganate, which is for taste and odor. We treated that in the springtime through the summer to rid, to get rid of that organic taste. And we'll be updating that chemical feed system in January.
So Bart, if I, the old medium that you would use to upgrade, I'm assuming is less than this, but this is a much superior product?
Yeah, if you just, I'll show you the, well, I'll just tell you. In the results in this report, the increase in water production was anywhere from thirty-five percent to 181 percent greater or more volume of water. So significantly.
The pictures that you showed there, the medium, if that's what you're currently using, looks like you're shoving water through charcoal briquettes.
Yeah, that's what it is.
Okay.
And where this other media is, it's a clay, it's got more media surface.
Looks better already.
So Bart, when you finish with those two components, not only you reduce the waste in the water, but you improve the quality of the water taste?
It will improve the quality, the cleanliness of it, the clarity of it. And then with the potassium permanganate, in the season that we get the organics, that will take out the taste and odor.
Okay. Sounds like a win-win on that one.
The potassium permanganate, isn't it a large cost?
No.
I'm just waiting to get the, the quote in the next week.
Thank you. All right, so any question?
No need to sell you more on the media.
No, I think we understand that it is a better filtration
Yeah, much better.
Okay, now, let's go to the one that hurts.
The one that hurts?
There's an intermediate one, there's one that hurts less and then one
Okay. Well, hurt us less and then hurt us more. You're comparing us one better at a time, eh, for the punch.
We have a grit, well, since I've started in the wastewater plant, I've been trying to improve the plant steadily over the years. We've been, you know, it's, it's an old plant and it's wearing out. And seems like the things I've upgraded are wearing out as well. It's mechanical and you can't avoid that. The grit removal system, this proposal is the primary treatment of the wastewater. It removes all the suspended solids, the grit gravel, golf balls, everything that's heavy grit. It will remove that. And what we're facing right now is the grit is going through our plant. It's destroying our pumps and, and our valves and so where we're continually repairing those. So this grit removal system is a kind of like a plug and play. What is proposed here for the four hundred and five thousand? This is a complete plant replacement. The volume that it will treat, our plant in the last ten years averages about 2,000 cubic meters a day. The plant design is 4,000 cubic meters a day. We've never treated that except for an inflated vent. And so, you know, I, we can look at this either two ways, a full plant upgrade or a half a plant upgrade.
Okay, so give us a sense a little bit financially, where are we going on a half plant? Or is that something that you would say over the next five years, we need to complete the
Yeah.
the full, so we have a backup just in case?
Yeah, the overall, I'll start overall, so you get a picture of it. The whole plant upgrade, and this is estimation because I haven't got results back from the engineer, because I've got the proposal for the product that goes into the plant. But it's the installation cost and the engineering cost that I'm estimating. And I'm going by off of past projects and the percentage at a cost. So the overall project for a full plant upgrade would be about 5.2 million.
That's a choker.
That's a lot of kernels of corn.
So the, the upgrade for half a plant, and you have to take in mind there are certain things you have to bring in, whether it's a full plant or half a plant. You still have to bring in the PLC controller and the controller panel. All that has to be brought in so that you can plug in the second part of the plant afterwards.
Okay, so help me understand a little bit timeline. You have a plant right now that is half operational or full operational?
Well, it's getting to the point where it's half operation.
Okay, all right. So how are you going to replace that with a new one? So half of it is totally dismantled and on the same footprint?
Same footprint, we put in
The new, the half, half of the other one?
Yep. And the new plant will operate approximately, or will treat approximately 3,000 to 4,000 cubic meters.
Half that?
Yes, of the new product.
Okay.
The new MBR plant.
So it's time and a half what we're doing now?
Approximately, three to four, four maximum.
Go ahead, councillor Brown.
So the question I was having, if and when we finish our agreement with the county, is that going to supply enough water for them, for their
Well, this is the wastewater.
Nothing to do with it?
This is the wastewater.
This is the wastewater, not the
It's a sewer.
This is just for the town.
Okay.
That's your question about the water plant, yes. The study from Stan, Stan Tech?
Stan Tech, yeah.
The study from Associated is stating that we need to increase the production of the water plant too from 150 liters per second to about 250.
Okay.
The plant's never been designed to do that, but with this media, we will be able to accommodate that.
Okay.
So that's, that's a step in the direction for that.
Right, okay.
All right, so Bart, if we carry on, so we do a half plan because at this point we have not much choice. So how much money are we looking at and what is the availability of grants and reserves that could be used?
So we were, can I say 3.6?
Two points, well.
Well, your quotes are 2.9 and 400.
Yeah, and half of that plus engineering. Well, I can't really go
We put the project at 3.3, Bart.
3.3, okay.
For half?
3.3 for half. It's not quite half of 5.2, but as I said, you need to put in the controls
Up front, yeah.
And the panels, that has to come in.
So are there some grants that can be available to cover, I don't know, how do they work?
The Alberta Water Wastewater Grant will give 50% of the project. Their priority is water treatment. Their second priority is wastewater treatment.
Okay, so we may find money for the first project on water, possibly?
That's already funded, yes.
Okay.
We have funding for that.
Okay, so the second one, we need to apply to try to get a grant, but we have to come up with a half of the money. It's a dollar per dollar? Is that what it is?
There's also clean water and wastewater funding through federal government.
Yeah, we've got it in the budget, it funded two-thirds by other sources.
Yes.
So one third?
We need to come up for, with a third.
We need one-third, so we need a million, 1.1 million dollar?
1.1.
And that is already in reserves?
And we have money in reserve for that? Help us a little bit.
We'll talk about reserves if I might, I mean, we do have 1.1 million dollars in major utility capital reserves.
Okay, so it's not as if we, without a little bit of a pocket here? Okay, well, that's not a bad news.
Good news.
So, except we have to get two-thirds, two-thirds, we have to figure out the funding for it from other sources. And then we need to yet start to think about the second phase of that replacement, correct?
Yes. Now, mind you, in the, in the wait for that in the wait for that second phase,
Yeah.
we can, in case of a flood or any type of event such as that, we can utilize the existing RBC basin to treat a flood event.
Okay.
If that so happens.
So we wouldn't be without capacity?
Right.
Okay, all right. Councillor Salk?
So, Bart, just, just so I understand this, the current capacity of the plant is four thousand?
It's two seven?
Two thousand. What's happened is-
If it was fully functional, it's four thousand, right?
If it was fully functional, yes.
Four thousand.
Yeah, we're having-
You're gonna upgrade and do half that will do four thousand, so it's, half of it will do what this thing could do.
Well, half will be three to four max. Four thousand, I would say, has a very peak one-day demand.
But, just go with me on this.
Yeah.
So you could say that when we do this upgrade, half of the plant will do what the full plant could do if it was operating at capacity currently, but it's not.
Yes, that is in fact true.
So then, we're not, we're not playing jeopardy here with anything if we do the one half and then
Yes, I-
all down the road a year or two.
Well, this is what I, I'm trying to understand, Bart, is that timeline? Imagine we have, in the months to come, the okay goes with the budget, it's in a budget. What happened to the second half? When does it need to kick in? Budget-wise?
I would be, I would be very comfortable with a five-year projection of that.
Okay, all right.
Because to realize the plant, average flow has been two thousand cubic meters a day for the last ten years.
Okay.
And what we're putting in there will easily treat that.
Okay, so we can build new reserve in order to kinda
Yeah.
put towards the next project? All right, thanks. Thanks for helping us understand a little bit the finance and the timeline of it all. Any questions for Bart? Bart, you want to add anything?
Oh, no, just, just wanna bring this forward, because we did have a lot of problems this year with our wastewater plant.
No, and honestly, we appreciate that service, it's an essential service. So thank you to you and to your guys for working there. We visited that plant a few times as council and it's no piece of cake to work in that environment, so thank you very much.
I tell you that the operators there, Curtis and Wade, it's their dream to be able to luck and not get in and work on it, it's new technology is very clean.
You know what, I, I was always amazed when we visited that plant is to see the color of the water when it starts and to see how crystal clear it is at the end. And you say you could drink that water, I said, oh, thank you very much, Bart. Councillor Salk, councillor Coath.
So Bart, what you're telling me is if we do this improvement, we can actually go back there and it won't be testing our gag reflexes?
Yes, it'll very much improve that. The new treatment system is erosion.
Done. Giddy up.
Okay, councillor Coath?
Just to curiosity, how many towns or sites actually have a water treatment plant like this? Don't, well wastewater, don't most of them put them in ponds, sediment ponds?
Many of them have lagoons.
Raymond has just pond, McGrath.
Tabor.
Coldell sent it to Lethbridge, Tabor has a plant similar to what I, we're
Only do it, okay.
Years ago, they, they lost their RBC plant because it couldn't treat.
It's beyond the east of Tabor, yeah.
Yeah, it couldn't treat what they needed. And, um, former Cloud used to have an RBC plant. They had to go to a different treatment system, a little similar to this. Um, we are about the only RBC plant left in Alberta.
Is that a good thing, or is it?
Well, I think it's been maintained well.
Yeah, you've done a good job with it.
We've been able to hold on to it for quite a while.
And it's cleaner for the environment, let's put it that way.
Yeah, what, what's happening now is we had to go through a receiving water study. And what that study is gonna, I'm expecting it to come back with requirements for us to do this. I haven't seen it yet, but I've, I've gotten hints from Alberta Environment and from other engineers that we're gonna need to treat the ammonia coming out of the plant. Because that's what kills trout and fish.
Mm-hmm.
And RBCs cannot treat ammonia. Just, they can't.
So you need a new technology?
Yeah.
And that's what-
I'd rather be prepared to do it than to just get it shoved on you after.
So there is no ammonia here right now, then?
Yeah, we do have ammonia.
You do have ammonia there?
It's, it's low, but it's there.
Okay.
Councillor Barnes?
So, have, so are you saying we've had a problem with killing fish over the years?
No, no. But over the years, you have to understand, over the years, Alberta Environment's come down tighter and tighter and tighter on their approvals. They've required more and more cleanliness.
And the same thing with the water plant?
Water plant too, we've had, we, when we started the water plant, we were able to throw out one N T U water. And now we can't go above point three. And it's the same water plant. No different.
Yeah.
So we've had to slow it down and do a bunch more treatment to try to get there.
Councillor Bantry?
Thank you.
Bart, we're talking about the plant itself. What about the infrastructure, the supplying the water to the plant? The, uh, the, the takeout system and so forth? What is that situation?
Oh, it's fixed.
Yeah, you want me to keep going?
Are you talking like at the sewer plant council, like that?
You're talking about the water supply?
Yep. Because if we, if you upgrade a plant, so be it. What about the supply lines, the supply line?
We have one supply line coming to town that I have, I'm quite nervous about. We've had to repair it in two places that it's been rusted through.
Oh, that's good.
That's not good.
No.
It's a yellow jacket steel line.
Pick me out.
We're on a few different pages here, so you're talking about raw water intakes, councillor?
Yep.
So we're back to the water plant?
Yep.
Bart's talking about distribution line, and then we just finished on the sewer line.
We're talking about raw water line.
So we just wanna get our lines straight here.
Yeah, is that, is that a big new idea?
Input and output on both plants, what, what does it look like? Are we gonna have to upgrade those after we upgrade the plants?
Um, there's one line that I was talking about that I have, we're gonna have to look into and see if we need to take some measures to repair it or replace it.
What kind of money do you think we're talking there?
I don't know.
We do have a number plugged in the budget all over with you a little later.
Yeah. We're just doing investigation right now on that. The other lines are working well. Our distribution and collection lines are being upgraded every year. And we still have lots out there that need to be improved, but we are working at it.
So, Bart, there is that new technology that I know you use every so often on the sewer line where you blow a sleeve inside? Is that something that can be done on water?
Certain lines it can be, yes.
Thank you.
We have done it on a couple of lines.
Thanks.
It worked well.
Bart, if there is no more questions, we appreciate the update and thank you for being patient with us. You're the expert and we try to understand.
Hey, thank you.
But it's, it's a lot of money, always make us nervous, you know?
Always make you nervous. It's been fun, though.
Oh, okay, so you liked you add to his gray hair. Yeah, you can guy.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bart.
Thanks. Okay, well, J D is all yours. J D is our intern that is working on improving our policies and finding the gaps in the bylaws and helping us get better in our governance, so thank you for doing that.
Uh, thank you, mayor and council. Uh, so last month, I presented my findings after completing the municipality accountability review program, or the MAP. And so, um, tonight, I'll present the solutions to the shortcomings that, that we've come up with. And I'll just take them, uh, in order on the list here. So the first, um, shortcoming that I found was in regards to how the minutes were recording a declaration of pecuniary interest by a member of council. And so the, the problem or, uh, lack of compliance was the minutes need to reflect, uh, the nature of the pecuniary interest, what that interest is. And so I've spoken to Shem and, and reviewed that with him, and so it's, uh, it's a little bit tough because pecuniary interests don't come up very often. Um, but, uh, I've spoke to Shem and, um, addressed the, the needs for that. Uh, the second on the list is for borrowing bylaws. And what was found was that some of the borrowing bylaws I reviewed didn't have all of the, lending details and, and specifics about the borrowing itself. And so I made a checklist to go with the bylaw, uh, or for Shem to go, and I spoke to him about that. It was only an error that was noticed on a few bylaws, so largely it had been done. Uh, but I did make a checklist just to serve as a reminder for when borrowing bylaws are being made. Uh, the next on the list is the assessment review, uh, the regional assessment review board. And this service is provided for, by ORSC for the town. And as I spoke with, um, Mr. Lenz Kuiper from ORSC, he told me that throughout the MAP program, uh, they were contacted by a few other municipal affairs advisors with comments regarding the bylaw. And it's not our bylaw, but there's thirty-plus municipalities in the region that utilize ORSC for this service, along with us. And it's everyone's bylaw, it's the same bylaw for everyone. And so, because it has been brought up by, uh, some of the municipal affairs advisors, uh, ORSC is looking in to see what they can do to amend the bylaw, to address those comments. Uh, it's not our place to, to make changes to that, so it's in their hands and there's nothing further for us to do with that.
Okay.
Next on the list is our bylaw enforcement officer's bylaw. And what was found to be non-compliant with this was that, uh, how it addressed complaints and appeals uh, made by public, uh, made by the public. And so, as I reviewed the, um, the current bylaw, which is quite old, um, to make an amendment to it, I noticed that there are several things that are just lacking that could be there to really enhance and improve the, um, the clarity of, of a bylaw officer and their service. Um, things around officer appointment, standards of behavior, or the role of the C A O in bylaw enforcement. And so, uh, in discussion with Jeff about how to approach this, we created a, a new bylaw for, for the town and for you guys to, to look at. And I see that that's on the agenda for later on this evening. Uh, so the, the fix for this was to repeal or rescind the current bylaw and, uh, present a draft bylaw for council's review, which addresses these important areas and, and really makes, um, a much more, um, robust, uh, bylaw for enforcement officers. Um, the next item, again, deals with the minutes and it's in regard to passing bylaws. And there are some times when three readings of a bylaw are done in a single meeting. And council, uh, needs to approve the three readings in one meeting and it needs to be a unanimous vote. Uh, the only omission was that it wasn't stated as a unanimous approval in the minutes. And so I've, I've spoken with Shem and, and he's aware of that. Um, regarding the public participation policy, the requirement is that that needs to be readily available for the public. And it's recommended by municipal affairs that it's on the website, uh, for the municipality. And so Shem's put that on our website. So that's there. Next on the list is the subdivision authority and development authority. And our bylaw, um, covering this declares the municipal, the MPC, the Municipal Planning Commission, uh, to serve those functions for us. And the MGA requires that the bylaw establishing, establishing the MPC needs to also state its duties and functions. Now, our duties and functions for the MPC are in the land use bylaw. And so I presented an amendment to our subdivision authority and development authority bylaw just with the addition to state that those functions and duties of the MPC
No, and use.
are already, are, are in the land use bylaw. Um, so there isn't any change to those duties or functions, but just to reference uh, in the bylaw where they are to be compliant with that. The last item that was, uh, found to be in non-compliance was that there was a step missed in the recording of the demolition of the election materials at the last election. And so I've spoke with the returning officer and I also have made a, a reminder sheet to go in with the election binder just to remind of this step. So that in the next election, um, it won't be overlooked. And so that is a, um, the completion of the review for the, the MAP program. And depending on council's judgments on the bylaw amendment and the proposed bylaw for the enforcement officer, uh, if those bylaws do get passed in due time, then all of the gaps that were identified, or that I was able to identify by doing this process, will have been remedied. And, uh, the town will, um, have a, a clean slate for that.
Wow. Thank you so much for your thoroughness and for having such interest in, uh, in governance. Well done.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much.
It was a good project and I, it, uh, yeah, I, I did enjoy it. Uh, so I have one more item just to bring up.
Yeah.
And that's in regard to the council harassment policy. Um, so you may remember, in, uh, in June, administration brought forward a anti-racial discrimination and anti-racism policy that was distributed by Lidstone and Company, uh, law firm to all of, or to several municipalities or all the municipalities in Alberta. Administration, we brought the, this policy to council. And council's appetite at the time was that our current, um, policies were sufficient. And as, um, in that meeting, as we were discussing the harassment, uh, the policy, there was a desire for the, um, harassment policy that we had in place to better represent, uh, councils and, and the town's interactions with the public and not be so focused on strictly in the work, in the workforce. And so I've gone through and I've altered some of the language in this policy to make it more, um, general in the terms of location as to where harassment and where interactions happen, to make it not be as specific to the workforce. And, uh, I've also since, um, going into the policy, taken the opportunity just to, um, clean up some of the language and making it a little bit more concise and, and formatting to, to make it in line with, uh, with the way your current policies are being written.
So, J D, let me ask you a question regarding that one. Uh, on the first page of your harassment, where you have definition, on the number two, you have employees, councillors and town volunteers. So when you talk about councillors, you're talking about councillors in the interaction at this table? Or their interaction with public, with staff? And, or everything and the above?
So we're talking about everything in the above.
Okay, all right.
We're just saying that councillors are included.
Okay.
That the, the guidelines and the expectations and responsibilities apply to councillors as well.
Okay, so in that, in that case, would it be useful then to have a reference to our code of conduct somewhere? Uh, in our code of conduct policy for council? And has that kinda mentioned somewhere as a reference? Is that something that could be done, or?
That's definitely something that can be done, um, to reference the council's, uh, you're talking about council's code of conduct?
Yes.
Uh, we can definitely reference that.
Because we have nothing regarding harassment in our code of conduct. So maybe a reference to this policy might be a useful way to enhance what we have.
I see, yeah, okay, uh, just so that I'm clear.
Just a thought.
Have, yeah, having the code of conduct reference this policy? Or having this policy reference code of conduct?
It could be vice versa, but I would think the code of conduct
Referencing this.
referencing this.
Okay, I can see the benefit to that.
Yeah, maybe you want to look at that as another project somewhere down the line.
That'll be an easy one.
Okay, all right, thanks.
All right.
Thank you so much, well done. Any comments for J D or, or questions? Seeing none? Thank you. All right, so adoptions of minute, we had a regular meeting of council October the thirteenth, two thousand twenty. Councillor Barnes?
I moved to approve the minutes of the last council meeting.
I move to approve the minutes of the last council meeting.
Any comments, questions? I really feel that we're quite representative of what we thought. Thank you. All in favor? Thank you very much. All right, so let's go on the sixth bylaw and policy municipal accountability program So as you heard, J D., we have a draft bylaw amendment for the Development and Subdivision Authority bylaw 1478A. And so I really do not think that this one affects the public. In that sense, we could pass first and second reading, do third reading at a later council meeting. That could be something we could do. Counselor Bengry.
I give motion to give first reading to proposed bylaw 1478A. It's the bylaw amendment.
Thank you. Question? All in favor? Thank you. So I would think that the proper way to do it, if we wanted to do a second reading, would be, Jeff, do we need to allow for second reading?
Do you need a second right now?
We just do second reading, thank you. No, you have to allow for third, but I was not sure for second. Counselor Self.
I want a second reading of draft bylaw amendment 1478A.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. So we'll do the third reading a couple of weeks' time or something? Or we could do it at this table if somebody wants to allow for third reading, because it doesn't affect the public.
We could allow for third reading.
But we need to allow to.
Okay. I'll make a motion to allow for third reading of bylaw 1478A during this meeting.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. And then let's go now, third reading. Counselor Bonds.
I move to approve the third reading for draft bylaw amendment 1478A.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you very much. So this one is done. So the draft bylaw enforcement officer bylaw 1694, it has quite a few changes. And J D., thank you so much. I read them through, and you're pretty good.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I did borrow from other bylaws.
Well, okay, well, you don't need to tell us. I mean, there is a few things I spoke to Jeff about, and I know he probably spoke to you about, and I don't know, did you?
Your print one, obviously, is an older one. We made a couple of grammatical things we found that are all updated.
Yeah. Did we by any chance put the definition of the appellate?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Because when I read that, I thought, oh, it would be nice to have a definition. Okay, so that is all good. Any question for J D. regarding the wording or the intent or the content? No? Okay, well, in that case, let's go ahead and start to approve.
Send the first reading.
It'll do it when you approve this one.
So do you want me to move?
Please. You move for first reading.
I move for first reading for bylaw 1694, bylaw enforcement officer bylaw.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you very much. Okay.
You may want to sit on this one for a couple of weeks.
Yeah, we could sit. Do you want to sit, or do you want to do second reading, and we'll stop there?
Second reading is still.
Let's do second.
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor.
Later in the back, we talked about the repeal of bylaw 1534, and amendments there to shall be rescinded. Is that what we just voted on?
Yeah.
Wanted to make sure of that.
When this bylaw passes all through.
It will rescind it automatically.
Okay, that's all I wanted. That was the only question.
No, that's okay. Good question. Do you want to go ahead, move second reading?
Sure.
Go ahead.
I move to approve second reading of bylaw 1694, the bylaw enforcement officer bylaw.
1694. Okay. All in favor? Thank you very much. Maybe you can bring that.
Jeff, we'll bring it back.
Yeah. Take the time to read it in detail. It's interesting. Okay, and the last one, the draft policy harassment policy, there again, it has been a quite comprehensive update. Thank you so much for that, too. Counselor Self.
Move to approve harassment policy H-2-1.
Okay, so all in favor? Thank you. Now, we can go on to second. Counselor.
It's a policy.
Oh, it's a policy, sorry. Okay, I was on a roll there, man. I should have read the title, eh? Thank you, of course. Did we vote on it?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, just in case, because.
We're gonna deal with that.
Yeah, I had in the back of my mind that I made a mistake last time. I want to not repeat it. Okay, 2021 budget. It's not to give us a headache, just to give us something to choke on a little.
I'm here to give you a headache.
You can have the headache, we'll choke on it for what?
No, thank you, Counsel. What I wanted to do tonight, hopefully with your consent, is I wanted to do a very brief look at this tonight, and then I want to leave you with that to look over between now and C C W next Tuesday. There's a couple of, obviously, you know, there's a couple of big pieces to this puzzle that I would like to have some conversation about tonight, which is going to let us formulate this a little bit better for next week. We hit a certain point where we simply needed the input of council on a number of items before we could proceed too much further. I know you're looking at some of the numbers early and saying, that's not what we said, or we're not there yet, and you're right on both accounts, but I'll explain a little bit how we're getting there. You have three documents in front of you. You have a five-year capital budget document. You have a detailed reserves listing as of December 31, 2019. And then you have the 20 to 23 budget with comparatives that has the 2020 as well. I've been thinking quite a bit on how to approach this. This is a bit of a different budget. In years past, in fact, most of my time as C A O, this first conversation surrounded, what's the tolerance for a tax rate increase, and how much do we want to reserve? You know, we've kind of taken those two numbers and then gone back to the drawing board and worked with that a little bit. But we have some large anomalies in this budget, not just one or two. We have some significant large pieces in this. And so what we've done in this budget is, it's obviously not balanced, it's a half a million dollars operationally out still, which is to be expected, based on some of the new costs we have operationally and then some of the aspirations we have from a capital point of view. So I think we're going to get there, but I wasn't prepared to start taking out large items without some conversation with you around the table to get to where we need to try and get to. And I recognize fully, by the way, the conversations like the one we just had with Bart don't help things that much. So don't get me wrong, Bart Hocken and I joke that every time he walks in, we spend a million bucks. Like, if he ever wants to come in and talk, rest assured, it's got six figures attached to it, right? But that's just the industry he's in. There's not a lot cheap about what he does. So he had some big pieces.
Can you lock the door the next time?
Yeah, right, right. What I'd like to do is start with the five-year capital budget, and I'd like to just talk about 2021. So my thought tonight, and trust me, I went over this a lot, is how to present this so we're not all overwhelmed and frustrated, and I'm here for two hours trying to speak through this, is I want to talk about 2021 capital. And then I just want to present to you some operational additions and anomalies in the operations budget. But I don't want tonight to go through every operational item. By all means, take this home, look at things, bring it back, and we'll spend. Our C C W agenda next week is actually, right now, pretty light. And so we can spend a good amount of time next Tuesday, once you've all had a chance to digest just a little bit, okay? So if we take the document entitled Five Year Capital Budget, the first page is showing all of the expenditures that are proposed for 2021. And then it goes to the right to show how they are initially slated to be funded. And I'll get down to, I know if you're looking, for example, the indoor rec facility, that's not the total number you would expect there, and it's not the amount of funding you would expect there. It requires some context, and I'll get there. And we'll get to that in its time, but we certainly will spend a lot of time on it. So bear with me until we get there. So what I wanted to go through and just starting, and I apologize, I know this report doesn't have lines across it, so you may need to fold over another page just to make it work well. But I want to start halfway down at the wastewater treatment plant upgrade. So 242762, so obviously, this is a major ticket item. And we're reasonably confident we can get two-thirds funding. We've seen these programs before where you work towards a third fed, third province, third local. But that third is still a monster at 1.1 million. And we are in the fortunate position, if we wish to look at it that way, with the glass half full, that over the last five or so years, six years, we've been working to aggressively increase our major utility capital reserve. That's been the focus when we've had surplus, we've plunked it in there, we've been able to do that. And so we'll also talk about our equipment, public works, equipment replacement, which has also increased significantly over time. There is just over 1.1 million dollars in that reserve available right now, which technically could fund the one-third of the towns, provided we can come up with the other two-thirds. Now, this is one that I, well, I hate to part with that kind of money, by the way. I support the use of this reserve for that reason, because that's what it was intended to be saved for. That was the point of the reserve in the first place.
Jeff, how much money do we reserve a year?
It varies, Mayor, so.
It depends on the revenues we have and the expense, whatever is left over.
It depends on a couple of things. We have in the past used major utility capital reserves as a bit of a balancing line for the budget. So, you know, if we're $30,000 here or $20,000 there, well, let's not reserve 150, we'll reserve 120, and then we'll look at surpluses at the end of the year. That's, it's been a bit of a flexible account for us, but it isn't a prescribed one. We've been fortunate that we've been able to, in your terms, sit at the end of the year and say, hey, we have $175,000, what do we want to do with it? Well, let's go with major utility capital or a variety of reserves at the end of the year, which has been good. But it isn't prescribed, Mayor.
No, but what I'm thinking, I'm thinking phase two. There is still, it said the whole project is 5.2 million.
There'd be a couple million left on there.
Right?
Yeah.
So 2 million, so divide by three, we still need another about 650,000, 700,000. So I'm trying to figure out, it said about five years, that's about $120,000 a year. There have been a little bit more, more like 140,000 a year we need to reserve to find that seed money.
Correct. Now, I want to word this properly. We are endeavoring to build this budget around a massive recreational expense, and we're going to work towards that. That will interrupt our previous ability to reserve in utility capital as we have in the past, and I'll explain that more thoroughly when we get in the budget. So, for example, we're budgeting in 2021 $130,000 less in wage and machine time recovery from previous years, because we won't be doing as much in utility capital, which is where we've been recovering funds to put into major utility capital and equipment replacement. But we'll talk about that. It's just one of the many complex pieces of this. So when we're looking to put one item as a large ticket that will largely be third-party contracted, our ability to recover funds from those projects like we have in the past is greatly reduced. It's just the nature of the beast. When we do our own work, we recover some funds. When we third-party out, machine and labor and all those things, we don't have that ability anymore. But there's still some there. I just can't speak to how aggressively we can do it over five years. We'll have to look at that closer.
Thank you.
So we do have a reserve that, in my opinion, is appropriate for that use to fund it, but that really, I mean, that depletes that reserve almost exclusively. In your, you have a sheet that is called the Detailed Reserve Listing, and you will notice it says, it's the second line on the whole sheet, says 1.281777 dollars, 1.281 million under major utility capital as of December 31, 2019. But we used 165,000 of that within 2020, so that comes off. So you have to remember that these reserves are a bit fluid, because we draw from them when we do budget to fund certain things, and then we'll reconcile that balance at the end of 2020. So we've considered that, there's still 1.1 million in that reserve, and that's how we've put to fund it, with one-third reserves, two-thirds grant. I wanted to get into a little bit with, you know what, let's just jump to the rec facility, because everything else kind of ties in here. So two-thirds of the way down the page, we have indoor recreation facility, 2.6 million, and we have reserves of 300,000. Now, we recognize there's a large spread there, but let me, there's a whole ton of context here. What we've done in the budget in order to not have a massive deficit in the budget is anything that's unfunded, we simply have as other, funded by other. But we don't know what that other is. And by the way, we don't know if 2.6 million is the right number either. But for the purposes of the budget, whether it's a dollar or whether it's 1.6 million dollars, we have it funded by other. We just have to go seek out that other funding. So it's not like that's throwing us way out. The total project number is reasonably irrelevant. But I will speak to that number, that administratively, we are not confident in the quote you've had so far on that building. We're north of 15,000 square feet, and at 1.1 million, that's only just over $70 a square foot. We can find no evidence of anything even close to that, looking at other rec facilities that have been built recently. We looked at Duchess, Edson, Claire's Home's building, like a community hall, it's not recreation. Coldell just announced theirs yesterday with the dollars and the size. And then we looked at some other projects we've done, like our pool expansion piece, which, again, that was $280 a square foot. So we've got a big gap there. So once we, and we're going to talk about this more, by the way, once we kind of settle the size of this thing, then we can prove those numbers, and then we'll plug that in. But we don't know yet. So we went with 160, $170 a square foot, because it was on the very low end of every other facility we found so far, is what that is. But subject to, what's the word I want? Subject to confirmation as we get the facility a little further down the road. But we're just really, really nervous about an $80, $70, $80 square foot building, that there's just nothing that shows that it can be done for that. And so, you know, we're going to have to mitigate that a little bit. But what I wanted to talk about with you when we're trying to formulate this capital for discussion next week is, there's a reason why there's a $300,000 in that reserve account. And that is because if you look at our recreation reserves, which if you go back to this document that shows Detailed Reserve Listing, and it's near the back, it's, actually, your pages are a different size than mine, but it's 4-10-268, Reserves Park, Recreation and Culture. Okay, so if you guys, it's the last page, thank you. Mine's second to last, it's a little smaller page.
Second to the last page, yeah.
Okay, so it may start just before that, too, Counselor.
I stripaged before the end in mine.
Okay, so what you see in there is you see a number of categories for reserves. The first one has a list of about 12 things, and ends at 559,121 dollars as a December 31 balance. There's another small section there of $38,000, and another one of 99,000, and another one of 70. So the question is, how did we get to 300,000? And the answer is, because as it sits right now, that's what is mostly available without making some dramatic changes into what's funded through reserves in this year and going forward. So how we got to that number, within all those rec things, there's two golf course lines, which are both significant. So we pulled those out, because we also need some reserves to fund a golf course expenditure. So we took those out of the total. And then the last section of projects there at 70,900 are ones that were budget carryovers. So they're still intended to be done. So we didn't want to pull the financial rug out from under them, so to speak. They're even in this calendar year, they're scheduled to be done. So that leaves us with, really, the big chunk is the 339,000. Now, remember, this was a balance at December 31, 2019. So we look at everything in 2020 that was funded by reserves, we take all that out of the 339,000. And then we look at. And then we look at how much we taxed in 2020 to put back in the reserve. And that gets us back to roughly 300,000. And so that's, that's the kind of actual balance that sits there for that purpose. Now, one thing I want to mention, and this is, I will caveat this very clearly. This is my opinion only. I'm not, I'm not, what's the word here? Again, I'm trying to tread so carefully here, Counsel. I'm not excited about using that 339,000 for this purpose, and I'll explain why. That three years ago, we finished the rec master plan, and you as a council decided that we would try and tax around 225 to 250,000 dollars a year to support what was in the rec master plan, essentially everything we currently owned. How would we replace it, update it, and those things? And this money has come from that. And so that money is there to support the priorities in the rec master plan. Now, the answer might be, we're not pursuing the priorities in the rec master plan. Fair enough. That's your decision. But it's a decision we all kind of made to go down that road only two budget years ago. And so I would be cautious about abandoning that, that, that idea, that concept of supporting the recreation that we have. But again, this is firmly within your discretion as a council. You can take any of the amounts that are on here and assign them to whatever you see fit. But I just, I told you how I supported the water wastewater one, because that was specifically what the intent of that fund was, and I do. This one I'm struggling a little more with, because it's not the intent of what that was for. But it's related, to be fair. It's recreation infrastructure. So what that means, if you go back to your five-year capital budget, what I would like some conversation, which we don't have to come to any conclusions tonight. We have one, four more, potentially five, we have five more meetings between now and the end of the year. So we're in good shape that way. If you look at above and below that 300,000, there's 75, 15, 30, 55, 50, 40 and 40. All of those projects, above it and below that 300,000, are projects that are slated to be funded by recreation reserves in 2021. If you would like to free up recreation reserves, you can simply not approve all of those projects. And that will free up all of that associated money to go towards the one project. So that's one way that we can create additional cash for that. Now, the timing was a little off, and, but we're okay. Counselor Brown, you're meeting with the rec board tomorrow, because I ask them every year to just give me, are the, is the rec master plan priority still the same? Do they need some tweaking? Are they what you want? And so I haven't got that feedback yet. I will have it by Thursday, because I'll meet tomorrow night. And so I just wanted to talk to you about ways that we can, if you choose as a council, you can start to shift money in and add to that 300,000, so that we can try and get to that million that was the goal of the budget. And so that's one way, is to take all of those accounts that are recreation, infrastructure, and move that money. So I throw that out for you. I think that's roughly a 48, I think it was about 250,000, something like that, maybe a little higher, 280,000. The other place where you can find capital funding, one is an MSI. So we have some unused MSI sitting as a balance at the end of the year, currently with what we've proposed to be funded by MSI. And we've, we're trying to find a fine line here for you, because we know our capital funding from the province is going down substantially next year and thereafter. So we know that's coming. And so the question is, do you store any up now to mitigate the drop over two or three more years? Do you kind of phase yourself down? Or do you just say, hey, we're going to roll with what we get next year, and that's it? So you have some discretion in MSI funding, by the way, that we can look at. And then lastly, on this same page, and these are, if you go, and we're on the five-year capital budget, there's, there's four items here. Filter media at water treatment plant, which Bart just talked about, drying beds for the backwash pond. The wastewater plant upgrade, we'll disregard for now. Sewer, no, not, yes, sewer twinning, but I want to avoid that a little bit, and replace two bins. The reason I bring those up is if you go over to the right, those are all utility self-funded. So for example, we're proposing to pay for the filter media that Bart just talked about from the utility rate. So the margin on the utility rate, we reserve that when we get to the end of the year. And we, and then we also have in-year funds, because we project a margin. And then we can use it to fund that. But that is cash. So if we don't do those projects, while their intention obviously is to fund the utility, that's how we raise the money, we raised it through a utility rate. But I'm just pointing out, principally, I don't support it that much, but you have discretion to free up that cash. You can take margin off the water and sewer and garbage utility and use it for other purposes. It's a bit messy. I don't think it's the cleanest way to go, but it's certainly an option. But between all of those things, the million dollars is there. Okay, so I just wasn't prepared to start saying, this is out, this is out. We're going to take utility revenue and put it here, and we're going to do this, because this has some impact. For example, with MSI, and I'll use this as an example. If we use up most of MSI, what you will see, and we're not going to go over it thoroughly tonight, but if you look at the 2023 and 2024 capital budgets, we don't have any utility infrastructure in those years, because we don't know how we can fund it. Now, we can prioritize as we get closer. We, you know, if that's, if we have a line that's failing, well, we're going to bump something else, and we're going to do that. Of course we are. That's, that's what we'll do.
Okay, so Jeff, help me understand. Because when you move all the money away from utilities, for example, road repair, sidewalk, et cetera, sewer and everything, what happened to the staff we have?
So we would be, we would be obliged to find meaningful work or lay off. So I've talked to Bart about, we had a discussion, and actually, when we get to the next, I have that document about the indoor rec facility, when we get to that and a couple of items. I met with most of my staff, and we were just talking about what questions come to mind when we think about, how do we accommodate this type of rec facility on this scale? What are some things we talk about? And of course, Mayor, we talked about, what if we don't do underground utility work for a couple of years? Where does that leave us? Now Bart is saying, hey, I've got a list of 100 things we could do. There's no question. I mean, every fire hydrant can be repaired, and every curb stop can be replaced or repaired. And, you know, there's lots to do. That takes some funding. We can't send a department of six out for a season with no funding, but we can probably reduce it somewhat. And we'd have to find that balance, Mayor. That's what we'd have to do. I'd have to be confident that we had meaningful work for that size of a crew for a full season.
I mean, it'd be a shame to lose staff that we have seasoned for so many years.
But I don't know that that's inevitable. I don't know that that's the case.
So that's what I want to really understand.
Yeah, no, I haven't, I haven't lost any sleep about that yet, because I do think that there's, there's lots of little things that we can figure out what that funding looks like, which is probably substantially less than, than full water sewer pavement projects, you know, for a season or two. But we've certainly had that discussion.
Okay, thanks.
I think Counselor Bantry had something.
Yes.
Two things, Jeff. We look at the reserves in our, in our recreation, and Redford tot lots, reunion center tot lot. Is there liability issues with the present equipment that's there and the stairs at Redford Park and so forth? What's the liability on those kinds of things?
Well, you, you don't want to let them become one, I can tell you that for sure. And there, there are oldest ones now. That's why they're at the Q they are in the rec master plan. The Redford stairs, I haven't, I haven't personally gone and inspected them. Counselor Brown, maybe it's come up. I know it's becoming a concern. We're hearing a little bit about that.
A bit soft, but they're not terrible.
Yeah, yeah, like, yeah. So they're, they're passable?
Yes.
Yeah.
And also the sewer twinning nets. The sewer twinning is at extra foods, right?
Correct.
Is that an absolute necessary?
Well, the thing with that project is it's, it's almost, I should actually mention that a little further. You remember, we submitted that one through MSP, the recent stimulus funding that came through. And we, we also submitted the sewer, storm sewer by John Brights by Kirk's Tire. When we, when we got going in this budget, we really got looking at this and saying, okay, if we do the one storm sewer, we only have a small pocket of money left where we can't do much else. We can't do the second one, and we can't do the twinning. So the discussion and what we have in here, and we can still work through this a bit, which is, we go to the twinning. We had to supplement it with a little more to get it done. But Bart feels that that's the highest, the higher priority. Because if, if that one line goes down, we have no option to get all of the effluent under the creek. That's the only route. There's one way. And so he's nervous about being able to take that out of service so that we can clean it, service it, do all that work, and then have redundancy. So we made the decision internally that we would focus all the MSP resources on the twinning and use sewer funding to come up with the difference. Now, we have not put that to tender yet, so we're hopeful that the costs are still going to come down on that one.
Thank you.
But it hasn't gone to tender.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to go over that year to give you some idea. I want you guys to all kind of take some time and look at this, that you have options to free up cash through MSI, through not using recreational reserves on other recreational projects, and through utility self-funded projects. And I've shared my opinion on what I think about some of those. But they're simply within your, your ability to do that. You control that. Oh, there's one other I'll get to, but go ahead, Counselor Barnes.
Well, you know, I was just, just kind of looking over this and, you know, some of the bigger ticket items, you know, the snow blower replacement. Now, we just did a bunch of work on that snow blower, what, a year and a half ago?
Yeah, two winters ago.
Yeah, two winters ago. And that, you know, that was, we hit a manhole or something and busted it up. Now, do they wear out that fast? Do we have to replace them every couple of years or so?
Well, we've had, this is, we've had this one for quite a while. We did some work on the diesel motor of the last one.
Okay.
But that was just one component of it. So that component doesn't worry me too much.
So is this a full replacement of the whole unit?
Different unit altogether, yes. Correct. And I rely on Dylan and I rely on Bart to give me those kind of answers, because it's just not an area I'm, I'm strong in.
And they're thinking that it's wearing out?
They're thinking it's time to, to do that before we have a rec.
Yeah, well, you don't want to have a rec, because you don't have a lot of people.
Yeah, I mean, we, we did it for all of the history of the town, but the last seven or eight years without one.
Yeah.
It just takes a lot longer.
And people in this town are quite satisfied with the snow removal and the speed at which it's done. Honestly, it's quite marvelous to have those machines.
Mayor, if I, I just wanted to finish up a couple of things. I noticed there's a lot of replacement bleachers, the Kubota mower. I mean, they're not, they're not cheap, but they're not super expensive. But are those items that can be put off for a year or two? Or are those are things that need to be, are they in the last legs, too?
So everything can be put off, right? We just start to run into downtime, repair costs, all those things. I, I'd like you to be confident, Counsel, that the things we bring forward for repair, because it's in the best interest of the town to do so. But I understand it's a bit subjective, too. So I fully appreciate that. So could we do a quarter of the bleachers this year instead of all? No question.
Yeah.
Yeah, no question. And that goes back to, that was fully funded by the rec master plan reserve. So if we wish to divert that, well, that makes that decision easy. It's not getting done at all.
Well, the reason I bring it up, I remember the very first budget I was involved in, they wanted four traffic lights, those flashing lights. They wanted four garbage bins, three garbage bins. And we cut out $39,000 by spreading them over three years instead of all in the same year, because we were short $39,000 in the budget, right? Not a half million. And so that's why I asked the question, are these things that can be done incrementally without, you know, having a big issue?
So as we get closer down to those numbers, and we really start to evaluate that, for sure. I can tell you right now, bleachers are a great example. We could do whatever amount would be appropriate that we could fit in the budget. That's what we do, because it's not critical.
Right.
Right?
Okay.
They're bleachers.
Yeah.
And we can replace the lumber on them, and we can weld them up a little bit, and we can do all kinds of things, right? So as we get closer to that, the one thing I forgot to mention, Counsel and I, one other place where you can free up cash to allocate to other things, this is another one where I will caveat and say I don't support it, but it is at your discretion, is you have reserves in other accounts for other uses. And it is at your discretion to change that use. I will not say I don't, I don't think, I will say, it's not appropriate, in my opinion, to take land reserves, for example, for this, or the electrical equipment reserve. It's not a very straight line to relate those two things. But it is cash that is at your discretion and is available to do so. And it's perfectly, well, I don't want to say it's perfectly appropriate, but there's nothing wrong with it from a legal, moral point of view, right? So if we get to that point where you feel you need to start drawing from other reserves, we need to have that discussion, too. But it's not my first choice, I'll put it that way.
Counselor Bantry has a question.
Jeff, several months ago, we had a presentation on lead testing.
Yep.
What's happening with that program?
I've actually got the report back from Curtis. It's in your next agenda. They did the requisite amount for Alberta Health. They didn't find any concerns, and so they're asking if we wish to pursue it any more aggressively. But we didn't have anything turn up of, there was two that initially were over the limit. They went back and retested them, and they came back under the limit. So they're worried there was some anomaly in the testing.
One of them was my house.
Oh, was it?
Yeah.
Well, there you go. So you would have firsthand knowledge of that. The first go, it looked a little over. It wasn't, it wasn't actually an inappropriate amount.
No, it wasn't a lot. And then he came back, said it was significantly lower.
Yeah.
But they did it again. And the reason was because they had run hot water through, and the hot water will always show a higher amount.
Oh, I see.
And it was supposed to be done with cooler water. And so they, when they did it that way, then it was significantly under the required limits.
So I'll bring you that result next meeting, Counsel.
Well, the reason why I ask that is, is we didn't know what the cost was going to be.
It doesn't appear we need to be aggressive in remediating that right now, based on the sample size. Yeah.
Thank you for the question.
So that's what I wanted to present to you on the capital piece, focusing on 2021, and getting some input on, and I'm not sure, you may want to engage in this tonight, you might, but where we can start to find funding if you wish to get to that million dollars in cash. Now, that leads into a much bigger discussion about the rest of the funding, too, right? But, or you want to sit on this and look at over what's in reserves and think about your priorities here from the rec board? And then a week from tonight, we, we do that. I also wanted to go over some operational things with you as well. But for capital, I'm curious where your thoughts are at.
Counsel, would you feel more comfortable, kind of taking that, looking at it, and at the CCW, really roll up our sleeves and work on this? Would that work better for us all?
Okay, for that.
Yes, okay.
I'd really like to know where the rec board is, then we can't just guess them.
Yeah, I think we should have a little bit of answers there.
That's tomorrow.
Okay, so next CCW, if you could bring us back on that page.
And we'll keep looking at it, too. Now, you have the bigger document, which is that color blue, gray, gray one. This is the, I just wanted to go over the operational point, and just to illustrate a couple of significant changes from last year, but that's really all I wanted to hit tonight. I'm trying to be mindful, you also have your organizational meeting after your council meeting. So I wanted to hit just a couple of things on this main page, and really, I probably have six things is about all. On the first page, halfway down the page, on 132400, which is our public work, custom work, I just wanted to use it to illustrate that when we shift our capital from utility capital, we reduce our ability to recover funds through the grants. So, for example, the 2021 wage and machine recovery is 133,500 dollars less than it was in 2020. 2022, it's a little more, so we bump up a little bit, because we have some stuff in that one. And then 2023, we don't have any. So it's always a percentage of the capital work, utility capital work we do. And that can change five times between now and the end of the year. We'll still look at all that. But I just wanted to point out that that does impact. If you would go to page two, and probably next week as well, we're going to have a little more robust discussion on the golf course. Of course, very, very pleased with where we end this year, but I'm very concerned about kind of our long-term plan on this facility. At 172702, we were looking at the golf course revenue. A standard year, so if you take this year out of the equation and go back the last few years before that, our revenue is roughly 480,000 a year. We are budgeting 612 this year. And that still puts us at a $100,000 loss on the golf course at 612,000 in revenue. And part of the reason is, is over the last few years, and I support this, I think I recommended it, we've been investing a little more aggressively in capital, for one, but that keeps with it an associated payment. And so we've got a $65,000 payment in there. And what we've been doing is we're spending more annually on capital than we're paying. And so that's accumulating. And we have to just keep a close eye on that. Next meeting, we're going to look at all of our debenture bylaws and where they're at and what's going on. So we'll look at that a little more closely next, next meeting. But I just wanted to point out that even, even at 612,000... But I just wanted to point out that even even at $612,000, we are still budgeting a six-figure loss there each year. And we are, I wish I was supremely confident we'd hit 612, but I think we will. I think there'll be enough residual upside from this year that will do another $100,000 or so, more than we have in the past years. So we're just going to want to keep an eye on that, and we're going to want to keep a close eye on our capital spending there and how we're doing that. I don't have, let's see. I know I have more than two things, that's for sure. Okay, okay, so page 10, if you jump all the way to 10. Now, this is, again, very preliminary numbers at best. Do not take these as settled. We're trying to take some estimates, and we don't know the scale of this yet. We're trying to take some estimates on the impact of the rec facility, of the proposed rec facility on the budget. But again, we don't know the scale of this yet, so we just plugged in some new, some numbers. Under 272011, recreation wage, we bumped that to 1027. That's, at this point, that's 1.5 positions at the facility. And again, until we establish the programming, I don't have any confidence in that. We just plugged a number in there so that it's marked for for further debate.
So it's 1.5 position?
Yeah, a full-time and a part-time. The other one that was a bit of a frustrating number, but it is what it is, and I got to work through this a little more, it's at the very bottom of the page, and we we added a line for Spray Park. Based on the two months it was operating, we anticipate next year it'll be a $50,000 touch to run that thing. I I chose not to add a couple of words in that line. But now, here's the, here's the thing with that, though, if I can glass half-full this again, that is the electrical, the water, and the sewer utility charge for that facility. The electrical goes to a third-party retailer. That is an actual hard cost, 100% of that goes away, but the water and sewer, we pay ourselves. So we have this debate all the time in the office of, do we accurately represent the costs? We are going to cut checks to NMAX for somewhere around $50,000 next year. And if we don't put it in the budget, now I'm $50,000 over on budget. But we also add revenue on the revenue side. So the bottom line isn't impacted terribly, but I just wanted to throw that in there to, we're trying to capture the costs of it. And based on the two months, and we're still going to tweak it next year, it'll have pressure reduction valve in it, we'll turn it down a little. I hope I'm wrong, but we're going to look at that a little closer. Page 11, it's the very bottom of the page. Again, this is, this is a number we're going to debate five more times. We did, we did a new account for indoor rec facility operating expenses. What we have in there now is simply one quarter in 2021 of a number that we've frankly kind of pulled somewhat out of thin air because we don't know the scale of everything being offered. So we have basically a third of a year in 2021, and then 2022, 2023. So that's the hard operating costs, costs, not including labor or if any financing is needed. But we're going to have to really look at what that means, because we don't know that yet, and we're going to talk about that in another item here soon. We just wanted to have a number in there. And other than that, that was the bulk of the major pieces and operations. We do have the policing costs for this year are about $109,000. I think they're a little less than I initially thought. I had in my head a three-year phase in, but it's a four. So.
Yeah. Didn't that change from three to four after AUMA?
I'm sure. We go, we were 72.5 last year, well, sorry, this year, we're 72.5 in 2020, 108.8 in 2021, then 145, then 217. I had in my head it was a three-year, but, so I I thought it was going to be higher. Not that I like 108, it's 5% on taxes, but.
So it tops out at 217?
Uh, yes, if that's the number I just told you, counsel.
Or I thought it was going to be.
217.6.
I thought it was going to be around 3 something.
Yeah. Well, that's the devil we know.
For now.
Yeah. That's what we've been told for now. I don't know.
So, Jeff, that is based on a formula that they finally fixed?
I, I.
Or do we know, or don't we know?
I've heard of no appetite from the province to change the formula. I've heard all kinds of petitioning and weeping and wailing and gnashing of teeth about it.
And I want to watch.
But I have not heard of any appetite from the province to change it.
So they're going to stay with what we saw last year at the UMA?
Yep.
Well, that's not good.
I haven't heard otherwise, mayor. If I'm, I'd love to be wrong, but I haven't heard otherwise.
Because after that, we do not know the percentage that they're going to to impose on us all.
We do not.
Which was between 30 and 70%.
Yeah, sure was. Yeah, so that's, that can't be ignored. That's an elephant in the room we simply can't ignore. Right? So I present all that to you, this is not balanced, I wasn't intending to have it that way. If we could all just take a week, digest it, and then talk about how we want to get to some of those goal numbers next Tuesday, then we can start to amend accordingly.
But there are many other discussions that needs to be.
Oh, no, no question. This is the beginning.
Done regarding, I mean, even that very big piece?
Yep, this is meeting one.
Okay.
And I I actually can foresee, counsel, that in December, we're calling a special meeting to try and tidy this thing up. It just feels like this one's going to be more complicated than they have been in the past. It's what it feels like early on, but I hope we start to roll here soon. So that's for your consideration, and then unless there's any questions, comments, direction between now and next week, we'll leave it at that.
Well, thank you to your finance department. Thank you so much, Harkin, for your hard work on this one. I'm sure you're pulling a few of your hair. Trying to come to the numbers. And thank you, Jeff, for that presentation.
Yeah, thank you.
You're still safe, Jeff, you're okay.
Okay, we have one more item on the 6C correction to the previous agenda item. And it's a little bit of a mistake of mine. We passed a resolution, we we voted without having a resolution. Is that the issue?
Do you want me to speak to that at all?
Please, could you?
Uh, Shem and I usually, he sent me an email the day after, a couple of meetings ago, and said, hey, who made the resolution on passing the urban renewal policy? Geez, I don't have it in my notes, I don't know. So when the YouTube video came up, we looked at it, and you had great debate and discussion on it, and then she called the question and you voted on it, but there was never a resolution. So we, we took it out of the minutes that you approved last meeting, and we're requesting a proper resolution to approve the policy and a and a proper vote. Thank you.
Counselor Barnes, since that was a pet peeve of yours, do you want to put the resolution forth?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. So I moved to approve the policy, the urban renewal policy, number U-6-1.
Okay, now, questions? No more discussion? All in favor? Thank you. All right, so it's rectified.
Thank you.
Okay, so on the seven. Do you want to go through in the, in the order it is, or do you want to try to deal with a little one, and then we'll have more time to sink our teeth into this one?
I'm about ready for a break myself.
Shem just went to get dinner.
Okay, so, all right, so why don't we do, why don't we do the small one then?
Good idea.
Okay? Seven B, the Santa Claus parade. So it's the Santa Claus parade where you normally go to Counselor Barnes. The problem with this year, they're doing it differently, right? It is where all the floats are standing, and people will be around kind of watching them. So what the problem is, if you look at it, that don't have no provision for cars who represent town. They need to be 80% decorated. Anything that is in a parade has to be 80% decorated. So my question to counsel is, do you feel we should even participate? We don't have, we cannot bring the horse, the carriage, and a car not decorated won't do.
My feeling is it's a waste of time to go. I'm not going to put 80% decorations on my vehicle. I did enough last year, and I, a lot of, I had a lot of response to what I did with the big snowman and a
Okay.
puffed-up Christmas tree, but I, that would be the the most, but I, I really don't think that it would be advantageous to send me.
All right, so are we?
I'm assuming the province has reversed, that's a good word to use for that, their stand on this, because this is what we want to do, and the others, we couldn't.
Right. Yeah, exactly. Exactly, which is rather interesting, isn't it?
No.
Okay, so we let go of it?
Not interesting.
So this, this, this one, we will not send anybody, so thank you. Seven C, business arising from the delegation. So Mrs. Wahlberger really is between a rock and a hard place there. They're $5,000 short, but I think if I heard right, they're going to fundraise. Jeff, you had a conversation with Mrs. Wahlberger before she came to council, so what exactly is the amount that we could maybe?
Oh, I didn't talk to her about that at all. I told her that was up to council, and I just tried to get her.
I just was wondering if she had a more, more fixed figure.
According to their numbers, both their total revenue and their participation is at about 65% of normal, so it's a 35% drop. What I would propose to you, although I'm, we have the most funding, which is specifically for reduced revenues related to COVID.
That's what I was wondering. Yeah, exactly.
So we, we could financially accommodate them fairly simply if we looked at 35% of their last year's fees or something, that we could, we simply wouldn't charge them, and then we'd claim the reduced revenue for most.
So I think there would be a proper use, we have $400,000 that is looking for.
Are we going to be able to spend all that?
So, no.
We're working on it.
But we
This is one way to do it, right?
We have some money there that has been generously given by the province to cover all those items where there's loss of revenue. So maybe that is a place where we should do it. Do you want to put a resolution?
That we support the Curdston Skating Club, I believe that's what they're called, for their funding of.
You want to do the 35%, like what they're down?
I think it would be better to put it in a percent, 35%.
35% of 20, of their last years.
Of 2019, of last year's.
Sure.
Funding, yeah.
Okay.
What would that figure be then, approximately?
Well, whatever that is, makes no difference.
Probably 2,300 bucks or something.
Okay. That was kind of half where I was thinking that we should go. So, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And they got eight, so they're going to do fundraising, they should be able to come up with.
Well, you know, I mean, we can help, we can do everything, but we can't help. So are we comfortable with that?
I just have a bit of a, not just with this particular group either, that if they continue to run into shortfalls every year, are they going to be coming to us every year for shortfall money?
Okay, so Jeff.
Not just this group, but any group that's running into problems.
Address that with Jeff, too, because I was a little bit concerned about that also. I think this year is an anomaly. I think next year, if it is, if it is again, an anomaly under COVID, that's a different story. But if it is just a program that's petering away from the town, it's a different problem. It's a club's problem, it's no longer a worry.
Yeah, yeah. So I have no problem with supporting it this year.
Okay.
But after that, I'm not.
Counselor Barnes?
Is it not counsel's job, though? Every counsel, every year, we have new things brought to us, and it's up to us as counsel to say, this year, you get the funding. Next year, you might not, depends who's sitting at this table, right? But it's not our job, we don't blanket, from here on out, you shall have funding from us. That's not how this works, it's my understanding.
I think, I think what they need to understand when we provide that funding is because we have the means
Correct.
Given from the province, we can pass that along.
One time.
Okay. All in favor? Thank you. All right, and Mr. Hatwood, so you had a presentation regarding the the water plant, the upgrade. Counselor Silk, you were saying, go for it, so do you want to go for it?
Sure.
Okay, so Jeff, what do you want from counsel on that one, please?
Well, we've, we've got a couple of options.
Because it's going to be in the budget, so.
Right, it's in the budget, so you can simply entertain it.
Right, so are we confident that an upgrade is what we want? I would hope so.
Again, you got time to debate it.
Yeah. Counselor Silk?
So are we dealing with this separately, like we're just going to make a motion to approve the budget item for filter media, the water treatment plant?
Here's the risk, counsel, I appreciate what you're getting at. There's a part of me that says, yeah, you you only, you only move by motion or bylaw, so you should make the motion, but
That's just in the budget.
Are we all confident that we're all going, we're going to have the funding to get that through the end of the budget after one discussion? I, I'm reasonably confident that we have it in the capital budget, we consider it through the process, and we try hard to make it work on the other end.
Okay.
I don't know, it's up to you, whatever you prefer, but I.
Well.
My only question, Jeff, is how quickly does Bart want to move on that? Because that seems like a pretty simple fix.
Oh, right, right, right. Um, I think he's okay. One of the reasons why this time of year is our low consumption time, anyway.
So he's not, he's not in a hurry to do it now?